Welcome to this regular meeting of the City Council and the leaders of public community authority, June 13th. There was no executive session. The City Council committees are in the running. They have new deals. The five o'clock portion of the City Council meeting was reserved by the City Clerk until now. The public may also attend live teams and they submit any comments in writing prior to the end of the day of the meeting via email at cityofneedles.com. To join the live team meeting, log into the City of Needles website at www.cityofneedles.com to access the agenda and/or click here during the meeting, which I just clicked. The publicly attained, Ms. Garland Curry, designated sitting. Roll call.
Councilmember Campbell, President Terrell, Merritt, Pageant, Belt, Longacre.
Here.
Please stand and join me in invocation when we each stand in the councilroom with the belt, leaves us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Father in Heaven bless his town and its citizens. God our council and city staff and their judgments and deliberations. And thus, as we travel the desert, our ways to come to our crown jewel in the desert. In God's name we pray, amen.
Join me in saying our pledge to our wonderful flag.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America and to the people who worship it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Question, motion.
Second. Second.
Five eyes, Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, we have any questions?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. That's a lovely video. Two members of the final of the City Council here with us. Officer Patrick Murch in the back row, thank you Patrick for your service. Officer Terry Campbell, thank you Terry for your service.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to take the opportunity to introduce Moses Love, who has joined us as our code enforcement officer. Moses has a background in law enforcement and psychology.
Nice.
So. So we're glad. Thank you, Moses.
Welcome.
Your attorney.
Nothing.
Okay. As a courtesy of the interns asked, their cell phones will turn off or set in their silent modes, thank you. Public appearance persons wishing to appear, wishing to address the City Council on subjects other than those scheduled, I request to do so at this time. When called by the mayor, please announce your name and address for the record and may we conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time per person is going to satisfy minutes of the Code Section 2-18. Amendments to the California Government Code, Section 54950. We'll head to the City Council for taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda.
Evening, Councilmembers. Mr. Mayor. Jared Johnson, 13th and 20th San Francisco. Was wondering if the streets sweepers fell on a regular schedule. I haven't really seen it in my neighborhood, I've seen it on some other areas, but I haven't seen it in my neighborhood recently. I know some other people have been asking about it. And with the wind and the rain last night, got a lot of stuff falling around. Also, second thing, there's a property at N and Needles Highway. That's across from the Jehovah's Witness and what used to be Miranda's Car Wash. The property caught fire probably a year ago. Home trees were all burned, the garages burned, property looks abandoned. It's in a high-trafficed area, so I didn't know if something was going on with that property because it's kind of an eyesore where everybody drives through there and it's a major intersection. Now, been town since, been a lot more people. I've been, haven't really paid too much attention, but it's probably been about a year since I've noticed that property sitting there. And got fire at one point, so I don't know if they were waiting on insurance or something happened, but that property just looked really bad, especially on that corner since it's high traffic. So I'm just curious if there's anything going on with that to do.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I'm Christy Buckley and I'm here tonight because of, we're having a lot of trouble in our neighborhood with a drug house. Also, I have, I need to talk with somebody or get it noticed that our police department is not being funded enough or something. I have called the police several times on this house across the street from me. Mind you, I've lived in my home for 25 years. It's been a quiet neighborhood. I raised my three sons there. Now my grandson, my seven-year-old grandson is there. The two times that I did have officers come out, the last time was June 14th. It, we thought it was gunshots and it was at like 12:30 at night. It took the officer over half an hour to get there. I called four times. And when he did arrive, and I just talked to Officer Murch about this yesterday. When he finally did arrive, he was by himself and apparently the police force is very aware of what's going on at this house across the street from me. But he told me, I'm sorry, I am so late, it took me this long to get here, but I am the only person working tonight. Why is that? How can that be? I have three of my neighbors with me. We are afraid to call the police on these people across the street because we're afraid of the retaliation that could happen to us. But I'm at the point where I'm considering selling my home and my home is paid for. I am considering selling my home and moving as far away from here as I can. I was told that there isn't enough funding to have enough police officers out and about. That's not acceptable. That's why people are buying guns and they are having to defend themselves. And I think it's, it's very sad. It's very sad. We are, it's the law that we are entitled to the quiet and peaceful enjoyment of our homes. And over the last two years, that's been taken away from us. We're all, we're all done and we need help. But we're not getting it. We're not getting it. It's a known drug house. All that happened was it was moved from the Robinsons motel to across the street from us. And it's terrifying.
Thank you. Address for record.
My address is 322 E Street.
Thank you.
We need help and I, we don't know what else to do. We don't know.
Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council. I'm here tonight after hearing lots of concerns and grumblings over the past Fourth of July holiday regarding our fireworks ordinance. I think that I'm asking the council to revisit it. I think there's more in opposition of it, there is in favor of it after seeing and hearing and seeing the fires and how the drought we have going on. So I ask that somebody brings it back in front of them and reconsider that ordinance. Right now, I don't think it's time to have it in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Peter Bavona and I'm, I'm one of the neighbors and.
What's your address, sir?
807 Fourth Street.
Thank you.
Okay. And I moved in in October. I have a roommate who's on hospice and I try to take care of him the best I can, I can. I'm also a disabled man. The night, that was, that was no firecracker that night, okay? I happened to be in the kitchen and this was a flash and it was three shots. Now, I've been around firearms my whole life. This was like a shotgun, okay? Cops finally came up, cut a long story short, this guy standing outside saying it's a firecracker. I said, look, let's get one thing straight. I'm not an idiot, okay? At least if you said it was a cherry bomb or something like that, I'd say, fine. Because you know, that's what, they're very loud. But you're going to tell me a firecracker. I said, first of all, I saw the flash. And that's the flash of a shotgun, okay? So the cops show up, but before the cops show up, I told them, I said, you know what? I said, you're a liar. I said, and I said, I'm going to go in the back of my house and rewind my cameras. Well, he got so nervous, he ran in the house, out the back door. And I did the same thing. And I saw him pick it up and I saw him throw it over the fence because he thought I had cameras. Because he's an idiot. Drug addicts are stupid. They're not the smartest people in the world. The cops show up, I told them exactly where it was. They put it in the cop car, they put it in the trunk, so they have the evidence. I hope to God they still have it. She's, she had a citizen's arrest. She made a citizen's arrest. Here's the thing, I have pictures. First of all, the driveway. I asked them nicely, please don't block the driveway. That's all I ask. Now, you can park anywhere you want, there's, there's no law against that. But if you block someone's driveway, that is against the law.
True.
They do it every day, all day long, the same cars every day, hundreds of them coming from Arizona. I'm not stupid. I don't have to be a cop to know what's going on. And I know the city knows what's going on. And these people lived at, at what was the other place they lived up the corner from us? The Robinsons. They took everything from the Robinsons and they put it in the backyard. It's a fire hazard. They built a shed and a pieces of wood that's up against our garage. If that thing catches fire, it's going to light two, three houses up. It's unbelievable. Here's the other thing they're doing. I put my garbage pails in the front of the driveway so they can't park there. They took, they called the city and the city cites me for my garbage pails. How do you like that? This is at, and this is after I went down to the city and complained. I told the city, this is wrong. They keep, I got pictures, I got pictures in their backyard, you wouldn't believe, I could show it to you right now. How they got away with this, I don't know. How, how can these people get away with all that junk? And yet, I get cited for having two garbage piles in front of my driveway. This is amazing. Here's another thing.
Let's wrap it up here.
Of making us very sick. They burn toxic wood almost every night. I asked them to please stop it. I did a little research. California law says you can burn firewood and you can use it to cook. It has to be firewood, not pressed wood, not building wood that has chemicals and glue in it. And it's making us sick. It comes inside the house. My roommate is on hospice, she's freaking out.
Thank you, let's wrap it up.
Okay, so I, thank you so much for listening. You know, it's like I've been wanting to come down here for so long, but I have a problem getting that.
We look forward to your next visit.
God bless you. Thank you.
My name's Lawrence Bill Sanchez and I, what they're saying is basically true.
How many blocks do I have, please?
811, Fourth Street.
Thank you.
And I live next door to him and across from the other person. And I witnessed it myself, the noise. And I, and I found, I was stretching out the other day and I found a BB that had, and I, and I should have brought it, but you know, I still have it. But you know, whatever they were doing, they were blowing it up right in front of the houses. I went outside and I seen it blow up. So you know, that's a risk right there for people in general and, and houses catching on fire. You know, the house next door to mine is all wood house. The lady across the street's all wood house. You know, people will get injured, something might happen. You know, the intimidation, the, the fact that I put my trash can out there to keep these guys from blocking my driveway and what are, what are they, they, I get, I get cited for it. So what, what am I supposed to do? I mean, be their friends or, or, you know, make peace with them? How to, how to, how to, you know, because, because as a citizen, I have a right for peace and quiet and protection and privacy and so on, so forth. None of us go around the neighborhood bothering anybody, you know? No, we're not, I'm not perfect, but you know, it says, in God we trust. And if we don't start trusting in God and we start following man's traditions, we're going to end up like those people on the corner. And I don't know what to tell you all. You know, I've, I've lived here maybe since I was 21, 22. Met a lot of wonderful people here. Place is, was a great city at one time. What happened? You know, got to go buy your gas in Arizona, you know? But that's besides the point. But I'm just saying, what these people are saying is truth, we're not making it up, it's a fact. These people are known, known in Arizona, probably Nevada, in California. Criminal activity, you know, I'm, I'm not perfect, but we need a little help, help there to keep our neighborhood safe. And for, so it doesn't catch on fire and burn somebody's house down. So you guys have a good evening and take care.
Thank you for your help. Anyone else? Now we'll move on to presentation. Presentation by Peter Meza, Associate Insurance Components Officer in California Department of Insurance. Providing information on California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program.
That is, Mary, she would like to say one more thing.
Guys, I have one more thing that I wanted to say. I worked at a courthouse here. I worked at our courthouse here from 97 to 2004. My job was to put in all of these filings in the system. I did Judge Briscoe's calendar, the whole nine yards. These are the same people now that I was putting cases in over 20 years ago.
Thank you.
For the same things.
Again, Peter Meza.
Thank you so kindly. Thank you, City Council, Mayor and the rest of the City Council members. Thank you for allowing me to come. I want to make this quick. I am with the California Department of Insurance and I want to just tell a little bit about who we are. We're the largest protection agency in the state. And so, you know, it's important that you know who we are. We're the Department of Insurance. So I'm just going to go over the overview, we can go to the second slide and I'll just make that quick. So with the California Department of Insurance is we're going to talk about what the California law says, what the program that I want to present to you today is and how to qualify and apply. And then also I want to ask the city to partner with us and maybe anybody else that's listening today. And then we'll do a little Q and A if you need. But let me go onto the first slide. I want to make this as painless, painless as possible, okay? So the large, we are one of the largest consumer protection agencies in the state. We regulate all lines of insurance, auto insurance, homeowners insurance, health insurance, life insurance, on and on. We regulate all the insurance, major insurance companies here in the state of California. GEICO, Allstate, State Farm, Farmers, you name it. New York Life, you know, so on and on. But one thing you need to know is that there is a program called the Calif, well, first of all, there's, the law says that you have to have insurance. We'll skip this one. We regulate the insurance industry and yeah, but the California law says you have to have drive license or you have to have proof of financial responsibility and insurance in the state of California. And you have to have liability and there's a lot of penalties if you don't have insurance. So guess what? The state of California came up with a program, a lot of people don't know about it. And that's why I'm here today because this is written by, all the insurance companies have to write it. But you know, obviously a lot of people aren't aware of it. So let's go into a little bit about this program. Next slide. So the California Low Cost Program was created in 1999. It provides affordable, low-cost liability insurance. It's sponsored by the state of California. And the goal is to decrease the number of uninsured motorists drivers. Next slide. So how do you qualify? It's a great question. I'm glad you guys all asked. You have to have a valid driver's license, you have to, you can have an AD60 license. Your vehicle cannot be more than 25,000. And then there are some guidelines as to the income that you can have. So you have to be within a certain parameter of income. You have to be at least 16 years old and you can't have a bad driving record in the last three years. You can have one, one ticket, but no more than one. Next slide. So essentially in the Blue County, which is San Bernardino County, it's $263 a year. Imagine $263 a year for insurance, which is a little less than $22 a month. That's for the base. Obviously, it goes up from there depending on if you're a single driver between 19 and 24 and on and on. If you don't have a driver lot, a license for less than, for more than three years. So let's go into the next slide. CLC offers basic liability. So it's just the basics. So it's a, just gets you on the road so you could drive legally. It's up to 10,000 per person for accident, 20,000 for entire, the entire accident. And then 3,000 for the property damage. Next slide. What do you need to apply? Of course, I indicated earlier, you need a valid driver's license, you need a valid registration and then you pay the down payment of 20% of the annual premium, which isn't much, of $263. And then you can basically do this online. If you can press the button, I think there's a few more buttons right underneath, I don't know if you can, let's see. Yeah, proof of income you have to show, you know, you have to show some sort of proof that you make this amount of money. And then press it one more time, let's see what we got anymore. Yeah, and so there, you can show a paycheck stub, a W-2 form, a 1099 SSI statement. Even if you're one of the county or state programs like CalFresh, CalWords, on and on. These are sufficient to show that you are within that limit because that's the parameters that we're working with. You can see the complete list on mylowcostauto.com if you go there, www.mylowcostauto.com. It gives you a lot of information. Let's go into the next slide. So you can apply at mylowcostauto.com. There's a questionnaire there, you can go through the questions, make sure you apply, you will qualify. And then the process is all done, it could be done all online or you can actually call us or do a chat feature there, because there's a chat feature and talk in English or in Spanish, eight to four, Monday to Friday. Or give us a call at the 866 number and we'll walk you through the whole process and get you signed up. Next slide. This is where I just want to encourage you to, to partner with us. If you can, just partner with us. Help us by disseminating the, the CLC information in your community. I'm going to forward some, I'm going to forward, okay, somebody's joining. So we're now, we're now going to provide you with some links, some logos and we're hoping you can put it on your social media, on your website, you know, all these different accounts. Share it, you know, through whatever platforms you have, invite us to community outreach events. Let us present to your staff and you know, we just love to do this. We want the, the citizens of Needles to know about this program. And it's not, the word is not getting out about this. So we want to partner with you and hopefully, you know, we'll, we'll link together. So I think the last slide is, is next. Yeah, so that's where you go, mylowcostauto.com. And of course, since I'm with the Department of Insurance, we also have our website up here, insurance.ca.gov in regards to fires, in regards to all these things. The commissioner's been really dealing with Paradise and other fires that are going on and all the non-renewals are going in the state. So we know about that, call us, that that's a different number, 800-927-4357. And any questions, I'm here. Thank you kindly for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Meza, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you too. Presentation by Sandy Supp, CPA, Audit Leader of Fexer Company, Fexer Company. Final City Audit Report for Fiscal Year 2020. She will file, which is a real administration.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Sylvia Miletty, Director of Finance for the City of Needles. Calendar year 2020 was definitely an unprecedented year for the world. Our city audit report is quite late this year due to COVID and many other delays, which I won't get into. Despite the anomalies, the financial outlook of the city looks positive as of the stated period. Assets increased and liabilities have decreased during fiscal year 20. This evening, Sandy Supp, CPA, MBA, Audit Manager, will present the fiscal year 20 city audit via Microsoft Teams. She'll be on the screen. Sandy, thank you for being with us this evening. Please go ahead.
Okay. Good, good evening, everyone. I know that we have limited time, so I'm going to go through these slides pretty quickly. Okay, so next slide. Our firm is located in Sacramento and we were founded in 2005. We have 10 professional staff, five CPAs and five CPA candidates. And we have no negative peer reviews since our, our founding. Next slide. And the engagement staffing for this audit. Craig Factor is the firm president and the engagement partner. I was the in-charge accountant or audit manager and Scott German is our quality control partner. And we've all have many years of experience. Next slide. So this is our third year of auditing the city. The scope of the audit is we audited all the funds except for the NPUA and the transit fund and the Measure I fund. Next slide. So I, I just want to go over, we have required communication that we need to communicate certain aspects of the audit to the city council. And so the city's management responsibilities are the following. They need to select the accounting policies. They need to prepare the financial statements. Actually, we help in preparation of the statements, but we prepare the statement based on the city's trial balance. So that, which is provided by Sylvia. So, okay, and the other thing, the city needs to maintain supporting records and documents and needs to select the estimates for the, the four items listed there. Next slide. Now, our responsibility as auditors, we express an opinion as to whether your financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects in conformity with GAAP. And we need to conduct the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. Next slide. So we, we design tests to provide reasonable assurance, but not absolute assurance. No audit provides 100% guarantee that the financial statements are free of errors, that there's no fraud or there's been no misappropriation of assets. that, um, there's no fraud or there's been no misappropriation of assets. However, um, we, we did not find any indication of any fraud or a misappropriation. Next slide. Um, so there are no, no significant difficulties encountered during the audit. Um, the biggest difficulty was the delay in receiving the, um, audited NPUA's statements um, and the transit statements. Um, and, uh, we need, we need those to do the transfers between funds. Um, so all of those items weren't received until, um, you know, March through May. So, um, that, that caused the delay plus the pandemic, as Sylvia mentions. Yeah, so, okay, next slide. Um, so we recorded twenty-two audit adjustments this year. That's down from the prior year, which we had twenty-five audit adjustments last year. And, um, three of those adjustments were to incorporate the other auditor financial statements, the NPUA and the transit auditor's financial statements. Um, six of those adjustments were to record current year changes in capital assets. And, um, the net income impact of all the adjustments was approximately one point four million dollars. Next slide. Um, just a few other required communications. We had no disagreements with management. Um, we didn't consult with any other accountants. We had, uh, the management representation letter was signed by the city manager and the director of finance. And, um, we did find one significant deficiency regarding capital assets, which is the same finding as the last two years. And, um, but, um,
Yeah, because my nephew is taking his kid next week and, uh, so he can run solo for, he'll run solo for a few days, so.
Right.
Okay, next slide. Um, so we presented three, um, reports, the independent auditors' report on the financial statements, the report on internal control over financial reporting and the schedule of finding in question costs. Next slide. Um, and we did have a modified opinion. Oh, is there a question? Oh, no. I'm, I, I'm getting a little feedback, I think. Um, so we're unable to audit fixed assets, so, um, yeah, next slide. So are, we did have one significant deficiency. And, um, ne- next slide. Um, and I just wanted to point out that, um, there was a management response to this finding, which you can find on page seventy-two of the report. And I'm not going to read the whole thing because I, you know, you have it in front of you. But, um, the city has made substantial improvements. Um, so hopefully, um, with fiscal year twenty-one, um, that finding will go away. So, okay. Next slide. Um, so the next couple of slides just gives you, um, a view of the revenue by fund for fiscal year twenty twenty. And, um, see, you can see the NPUA comprises fifty-five percent of the revenue and, uh, the general fund twenty-nine percent. Those are the, the largest chunks. Um, and then, next slide. Um, the, and then this slide, um, I took out the NPUA revenues and just it's revenue by type. So what you can see here is, uh, charges for services, which is mostly sanitation and the, um, golf course comprised like thirty percent. Uh, the cannabis tax is twenty-four percent and property taxes is twelve percent. So that, remember, this is excluding the NPUA. So, next slide. Um, so the next three slides just show the city's, uh, significant liabilities. And this slide is for compensated absences. And, um, it, it actually went down, um, a little less than a hundred thousand, um, this year. And, um, yeah, that, that could be for a number of reasons. Uh, employees taking more vacation, um, or maybe, uh, long-term employees retiring or leaving. So, okay, next slide. Um, and this shows the net pension liability, which is the largest liability and, um, besides the debt. Um, and this decreased, um, or increased, um, from three point nine million to four point three million. Okay, and next slide. Um, this is the other post-employment benefit liability, which decreased slightly this year from one point two million to one point one million. So I think that's it. Next slide. So, um, a- any questions? I, I'm done with my presentation.
Thank you very much. Any questions by the council?
I have a couple of questions. On these, um, I'm just going back to your slide really quick on it. When you were talking about that, are the number, the deficit or the, um, the efficiency, the one that we have been fixing, does that have to do with our, the, um, inventory of all of our assets? Correct, that we have officially completed that one yet?
Yes, that's, that's correct. Yeah, so as of fiscal, you know, June thirty, twenty twenty, um, it was not an accurate, um, record of all this city's capital assets. So, um, we're hoping that this year there is a complete record of, you know, a pre- complete listing of all capital assets. Um, so Sylvia can probably, uh, respond to that question as well.
Yes, we were aware of the finding last year. Um, we went out for bid for a fixed assets consultant in the middle of COVID around June. Uh, awarded the bid in September. We're hoping to start the study in November. However, there were so many factors that were involved. The consultant did not come out physically to Needles until March. So the report has been compiled and is just about finalized. So this, this finding should be gone for fiscal year twenty twenty. Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Do you want to do a presentation?
One more, and then is this the unfunded liability, all the rest of it for, for employees? All the rest of the, for complete everything, retirement and, uh, sickly, all those?
Sandy, thank you for the presentation.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. I'm sure Republicans can consider all evidence and testimony before against it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interrupt, please. Um, uh, appropriate action would be to receive and file, uh, the auditor's report, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Campbell? Five Eyes. Councilmember Campbell? Yes. Terrell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Right now, hold on. Three Republicans consider all evidence and testimony for against a pre-candidated parcel map number two zero three eight eight, subdividing six point five acres, less or minus, and two parcels located in the R two, two-family residential zone, located in the center of rural live and Castleland Street. Parcel number zero one five two three three five five, staff report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Oh, go ahead.
Um, I have conflict because I live too close to the property.
And for the council's benefit, Patrick lives too close and has not been involved in any of, uh, um, discussions or staff analysis of this proposal. Um, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, at the urging of the city attorney's office and in the abundance of caution, um, the circumstances changed. And then when we initially decided to sell this property and as a result, the city attorney has requested, uh, that this matter be continued to the next meeting. Uh, and which he'll be here and, um, he needs to do some research. Do we need an action?
To continue?
Do we need an action? Yeah. A motion.
Okay, motion in a second. Call for the vote.
Three Eyes, Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Belt, four eyes, thank you. I knew I was missing somebody. So it'll be continued to the, uh, I believe, August tenth.
Okay, turn the volume of the mics up.
All right, guys.
Hello, hello.
It doesn't sound loud enough. Testing, hello? Your voice. Testing, testing, testing. I can yell, I got kids.
Boys picking it up.
Consent for all matters, consent for all matters, consent for all matters, consent for all matters. And so on the list of, or any member of the city council may apply from the consent calendar for discussion. Part of the council, I am unable to publicly address the city council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three-minute timeline proportion applies. The recommended actions of the rule of items four through fifteen on the consent calendar. Finally, we'll call vote. There are new items.
Your Honor, I, I would like to pull, uh, number seven. I have a question on it.
Okay. Anyone else? No, I'm gonna move.
I'll move to accept.
Okay. We have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Five Eyes, Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't remember seven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council. Um, this is the, um, final change order. It includes, uh, some adds and deductions. Um, the, one of the examples is that the grading for O and P streets were,
I hit the mic.
That were, were, the volumes of, uh, grading were underestimated by our design engineer. And we had to have more grading done to be able to create a better transition from Needles Highway to, uh, O and P Street. Um, we also, um, uh, we, we had a problem on Needles Highway in front of O and P, uh, that, uh, needed to be addressed, that it, it wasn't when they, uh, ground down, there were some problems. Um, there's a, uh, in your packet, there's a map like this that, um, all the general contractor is going to strike all of the roads that they fix.
That's what I have a question on.
And what I've asked them to do and what's included in this change order is about fifty thousand dollars of doing additional striping on the main roads that are shown on this in your packet. So, for example, Lily Hill, uh, we need to re-stripe Lily Hill. It's faded. We need the crosswalks, uh, added back in, they've just aged. And so we have Lily Hill all the way up to Coronado, I think. And then J Street, all the way up to Coronado. And Coronado and, uh, San Clemente and Broadway, all the way through town. And River Road, uh, all the way up into North Needles. So there's considerably more work being done in those areas. Um, and my objective was, it typically, it typically costs a contractor or they charge the city about twenty-five thousand of mobilized equipment and people. And what, what I was trying to do was to get this done now, uh, while we have a striper that's available.
And not have to put out another bid.
And not have to go out to bid. Now, we, we will be going out to bid in the fall. They're in about sixty days. Uh, and I have for you tonight, um, the list of, the preliminary list of streets that will be done.
That's my question, actually, your honor and, and city manager. Um, we're not going to stripe any streets right now that are going to be grinded up
Correct.
in the fall.
Correct.
Not one, right?
Correct.
Okay. That's all, that, that was the only question I had.
But according to the pavement management plan, this is the list of the next up streets. And I wanted to get you that. We're going through those right now. We debriefed on all of the things that we wish we would have improved or opportunities for improvement. For example, we had a bid on the line replace, water line replacement, and we had bids on the paving. With this second time, we're going to have three options. You can bid on either one of those or a combined bid, covering both. Because what we found was that the, um, the water contractor was delaying the paving contractor. Well, let's put, let's put that all under one general contractor and let he or she manage that integration of the work. Um, also, we identified some improvements in the engineering design, uh, that can be done. Uh, another one is if we ever do, well, we will, next year, uh, next year, we will do, uh, uh, River Road from K Street down to Jack Smith. Uh, we want to make sure that we don't tear up those traffic sensors that, that trigger, uh, the signal coming on or whatever. Uh, we do have a problem at that intersection right now that we've called the, um, the control, the, the person that's expertise in the controller because those sensors read traffic and then let traffic through based on how much, how many cars are theoretically in line.
Lot of backup there now.
Right, I know. And, uh, so we've got the, um, the controller expert, um, coming out to get that, uh, that fixed. Uh, and, but we want to make sure that next time that we bid that, so the paver doesn't find, oh heck, I just tore up these cables, which is what happened before because it wasn't on the inventory. So there are about a half a dozen improvements, uh, that we're going to do on the next tranche of, uh, of street work.
I had one question. Uh, you mentioned Coronado. Did you say that? It's not marked on here and I just wanted to,
Um, on the map,
Maybe it's this year.
Well, the print's too dense, but, uh,
I don't have it, but I can read it.
Uh, we're going to do, Bailey, I'm sorry. Bailey, uh, we're going to stripe Bailey. Okay, I misspoke. Yeah, that's what I thought. And then J Street and Lily Hill all the way up to Coronado.
Thank you.
And that's just additional work. Uh, plus I had them uh extend the slurry seal down at Jack Smith Park to go to the north end of the park. Uh, we also took advantage of the slurry um company to do uh the golf course, um parking lots, uh which needed to be done, and I, I was trying to avoid mobilization costs.
So I'm sure Terrell has a question.
Uh, because I live on Lily Hill, is there a conflict with me voting on this, or is this all encompassing enough?
Uh, no, because, oh. It might be wise to
I'd like to ask that stuff. I made it last week.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna step out.
Thank you for, thank you for bringing it up. Uh, does anybody else have on any of these red screens?
But I live very close to San Clemente.
Okay.
I'm probably
No, you're
We start affecting everybody, right? Isn't it like we know?
We're all gonna benefit.
Because it all, it's, when it's universal.
That is correct.
It's the common good, so everybody can vote, because it's gonna affect every one of us.
Okay. Yes, with um, with Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
The fact that he does actually live on the street, is it? I think for him to recuse himself, but the remaining people there, I believe, it's my opinion that you, you are fine.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
This, this is the, the first year where we're in right now, and is that, is this kind of like this jock you just gave us? Is this changes, or are these, this is what was, we're having the first year, the second year, the third year, fourth year? This is the posed?
Right, this is um fifty years.
Okay.
But these were, where it says first year, uh, these were projects that were in the first phase, uh phase of uh treatment, pavement treatment, that weren't able to be done last year. Um, so we will start with this up here, and we will go until the funding, uh projected funding ends, and, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, go ahead.
So, uh, one of the changes also I'll bring up is um, while we had paving and slurring going on, we had um the school district um asked, and you included three projects that they wanted to do. Uh, one of the things, we're gonna go to business people that own parking lots, um, and offer them a cho, a choice, do you wanna be included in this? We can at least get prices, and then if they want to contract with the, uh, the contractor, then they can. If they don't, then we just don't engage, but it should give us, our businesses, a chance to pay parking lots at a drastically reduced cost, per unit cost, square foot cost, than they would otherwise, because they have to bring out, you know, somebody has to come out and mobilize, and so we could, if we can feather them in, and what we charge them is the actual cost for doing their parking lot, plus five percent contract management. So it's a, it's an opportunity, it's non-committal, if somebody doesn't wanna do it, that's fine, but at least we'll get the prices uh to where they can make a informed, thoughtful decision.
Okay.
I'm gonna finish my question. Um, so I'm looking at this, and there is a street that's not on here, and this is a street where the water pipe broke on the seventeenth of January last year, flooding everything below it. And also, this street has had, this street was cut off, it has sewer things that happened because of the D Street overpass. When they put that D Street overpass in across that street, years and years and years ago, the sewer is looped, and the, the city was going to, and I got this from Lauren Taylor, uh, it, the, the plumbing, it's, the water there is looped, and they were going to eventually come back and fix that, so our wa, the water didn't turn black all the time on that street. That never happened, but what has happened is massive water leaks, and the city coming repeatedly, 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 and repairing those water leaks. So the street has been chopped, chopped, chopped. And if you walk on it barefoot, you're gonna cut yourself, you're gonna come in bleeding just from the rocks sticking up out of the street. Some people like to run on barefoot, they're really stupid in the summertime, but you know they do it anyway, I don't know what's wrong with them. But anyway, that particular street is not on here, and I'm not asking you to do it, because I wouldn't be able to vote on it, but um, it's Desnok. And all of the streets are being done up to Desnok, and the Route sixty-six motel is at the bottom of Desnok, which is a historic Route sixty-six building in our town, and that's at the corner, so it's very, from that corner up, but the very dead end from B Street to the dead end of that street is horrific. And I, I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to get anything done first or last or anything, I just want it to be done someday, just someday, even if it's five years from now, just so it gets on a list somewhere. So that's my only question, is this the end of it right there, or is there's more?
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, uh, Councilmember Campbell, um, this is from the pavement management plan that the council approved. Um, on the list that you approved is uh providing treatment to every foot of every street in town. So this is just on what I believe is the reasonable short horizon out there, and hopefully this is, we'll be able to do this first um two sets with funds that we have available. Um, and then, as you recall, we had two requests, one for, excuse me, Congressman Obernolte, for two million dollars of road pro, road projects, and then we also received a request from uh Colonel Cook, our county supervisor, for another two million dollars of road projects. So we will be doing four to eight million dollars of road improvement projects in the fall. Um, which is exciting, and it actually goes beyond what's on the sheet.
Yeah, and we may have some more change orders.
Yeah, well, and we build in fifteen percent contingency, because when you get out there, you really don't know what's under threat.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you for answering.
Public board.
I want to switch to a second, it's an important question.
No.
Then I remember that the public didn't get an opportunity, um, for city council to pick action, you should put it, so I'm standing up on another issue that it has absolutely no effect on anything, so when you're number eight, so whenever you want.
Okay.
Can I talk about this?
Did we um, uh, accept a motion, you accept, um, seven, one?
I have a question on this one.
The question on seven?
Correct.
Well, go ahead.
Um, Rick, on this change order, is this planned into the next one then, or do we not think about it, or what happened with it originally, where we?
Well, um, for example, on this, the striping.
Yeah.
It's um, my observation from, from uh watching uh the, the project and knowing what their next step was to finish the striping, there are a number of our streets that need striping.
So these are just additional stripings, not just the repaved ones?
Right, they'll do those as part of this contract.
That's part of the contract, these are just additional.
But the additional striping, probably fifty thousand dollars worth
Okay.
is, uh, projects, in my professional opinion, those streets need
Need them reshaped, okay, I see what you're saying. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We need a motion to approve item seven.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion of a second call for the vote.
Four eyes, Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
You want to public comment on number eight?
I do, Barbara Beard, two thirteen Safari, on number eight, I just wanted to know what it is. Uh, I did not review the packet, but I did research it a little bit, and it's, I don't think it's what I expected, so if somebody could explain what it is, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Um, we have, uh, one of the things we learned is that we may have five staff people in contact with the contractor. The quality assurance, quality control person, Mr. Savant, who is our inspector, field inspector, uh, the city engineer, will interface with contractors, Tammy, who's uh the financial manager, um, me, Patrick, uh, and Jesse Fregoso, the public works director. This is um a project management software program that allows everybody to, who has contact with the contractor, to input their conversations onto a common blackboard, whiteboard. So everybody knows what everybody has said. That, that's one benefit. The other is to track cost, and it just overall improvement, we, of the whole project management system, uh, and especially this next time where we may be doing uh between four and eight million.
How many years you afford?
Uh, this is, uh, the, the contract we'll be entering into is for the first year, and then works and does what we hope, then we'll continue, likely continues, if not, then we'll terminate.
More questions than you see?
Yeah.
How long is the enterprise contract for on number fourteen, three years?
What number is that?
Fourteen.
We have a, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please, go ahead.
A basic contract with um enterprise, um, and it is a, uh, it, it, it discusses the relationship between the two entities, and how we will uh lease cars and turn back in, um, the length of that existing contract, I, I don't have at my fingertips right now, but I will get you that tomorrow. But, but our contract
Three, isn't it?
You know, we could
It's true.
Three years is our
I think it's true.
sweet spot, our tendency, um, and then after that, we review contracts, but, but I'll get you, I'll get you that. You're welcome.
All right, let's move on, thank you. And were there any other public questions? As long as we're doing this, okay. Right, item sixteen, improving liquid budget.
I, I am joining online, so I wanted to ask a question before we move on, please. My name is Coralise Avell, I live at one five zero zero Vine Street. I'm not sure if we passed this up, it seems like we did, but regarding the paving, I noticed that you offered that to the businesses, there's quite a few residents in Needles, have you thought about incorporating the buying power of the residents who may want paving or slurry seal?
Yeah, um, Mr. Mayor, we, yeah, we would wanna be as inclusive as possible, so if somebody wanted to do their driveway or an apartment building, same thing, uh, we would try and just make the purchasing power of the city, um, and uh we were, we had very good costs uh from the contractor before, and anybody wants to use it, we would. So I'll make the commitment to uh broadcast broadly, if that's possible, to, that this uh is available, and if people don't choose to take advantage of it, fine, if they do, they'll at least have a, a hard cost. But yes, the answer to your question.
Also, would you be including the methods in which those residents can apply, and then dates, um messaging and communicating when that's going to be done, so residents are aware, you know, in case we're on limited budgets, but we wanna get this work done, what the drop dead date is as to when we need to make that decision or have the monies available?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I can answer that, um, we, we think that it, uh, we're preparing um the specs now, we will probably, um, I'm gonna say sixty days, we'll put out a, a request for anybody who's interested, or probably thirty days, put out a request for anybody who's interested, and then sixty days will issue the bid documents, uh, which will include anybody who wants to participate in this. So, uh, if you will, um, call my office tomorrow, um, I can put you on a list and notify you exactly when this is gonna occur.
Sure, and the other thing I'd like to ask is in future, could there be future considerations when the city is doing um city improvements, that we can be included just as the businesses, because the city needs to be improved like in all areas, and that pulls our buying power together and allows us to reach those discounts, something that on our, you know, individually, we wouldn't be able to do, because it takes a certain amount of manpower with the equipment and the businesses that have to invest to get out to one resident as the post, as opposed to the entire city, businesses and residents. It's appealing to everyone if we can share, share costs, the values of improvements throughout the city, so I would like to ask that consideration be given when there's city improvements where residents can take part as well. There's a lot of areas in the city that need to be improved, and I think that's a great way to get uh resident involvement and beautification for the city.
Okay, I, I, that, that's a wonderful idea, I'll, I'll do that.
Thank you, let's go on. Item number sixteen, approving liquid budget revision for fiscal twenty twenty one through twenty twenty two, increasing the revenue and power purchase expenses by an additional two million and ten thousand dollars, staff report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, the, I, I'm gonna refer you to um, the charts that are part of this section of the packet. Um, last year, or earlier this year, we were paying, um, you know, approximately sixty-five dollars per megawatt for power, and we buy it from the federal government, so we're not dealing with uh, uh, you know, private companies in the open market, this is, uh, and the government sells to us as a um publicly owned utility what the cost of generating this power is. Our costs have gone from sixty-five dollars per megawatt to two hundred and sixty-four dollars a megawatt. A, what is that, by times? Increase in the wholesale cost of power. Um, when you, and as a result, we have spent um the, almost the full year's um budget in the first two months. Uh, that's how dramatic that's been. So go to this chart, and you can see what those price costs or the price increases have been to us. So what we need to do is, I need a bud, budget appropriation to add more revenue, the uh, to be able to purchase, because right now, all we've done is purchased through August. So uh, right now, and without the budget adjustment, we don't have money to buy power in September and the rest. The utility board took a look at this issue, and lady, uh, the assistant utility manager developed a model about what her best forecast is for prices the rest of the year. And that's, that's high-risk business forecasting. Uh, but Rainey has been very good at this. So she concluded that with using four hundred thousand dollars out of the electric reserve, that they could limit the cap on electric rates at twelve point seven cents for what we call over hydro. Now, remember, we have hydropower, which is basically about a half a cent. And then this is the amount of coal, nuclear, gas, round power, alcohol. So what we, um, they took out of the reserves four hundred thousand dollars to keep that from going above twelve point seven. Now, and then they further recommended that it happen in two steps. The first would be effective uh in July The first would be effective, uh, in July. And then the next would be effective in August, and then it would go to the twelve point seven. So we tried to be sensitive to the, the increase. It amounts to about fifty dollars per home for, uh, the July increase. And about twenty-five dollars per home in August. And then after that, we fully expect, based on typical usage, that temperatures start dropping and there, the overall consumption will change. Uh, so thus lowering their bills, but the, the rate will stay the same, but the usage will, uh, decline that. Now, I'll take you back to January of this year. Uh, our over hydro rate was about eleven cents. And then, as you recall, the utility board stair stepped that down to its current eight cents. So we're not in uncharted territories. And when you look at the historic use of power, uh, which is in one of these charts, it shows the ebb and flow of summer, winter. So it, it's not unusual. But at the same time, um, the staff has been working on other ways to soften the cost. And that is, uh, HEEP has a program to help low income parties, um, to assist them in paying their utilities. Um, the, we also have, um, the, the county and the state are looking at, or the county that we signed up for is they're going to help pay the overdue utility bills. Then also, there's a billion dollars, two, uh, trailer bills that were, are in front of the legislature this week. And they would commit a billion dollars to eliminating all the debt of, uh, of people that, that owe the utility. So, um, we think that the, our best estimate is about three hundred that the city, the MP UA will receive between three hundred and three hundred and fifty thousand to wipe out the debt, so turn the edge of sketch upside down, uh, on utility debt. There's also, um, we are, have been asked or, uh, suggested by one of the counselors that we look at creating a senior citizen rate that, uh, and we need to make sure that how we would, how other people have done it, because the rate we're required by state constitutions, charge everybody the same rate. Unless there's something that your particular location causes a higher cost. For example, if your business requires, um, a four hundred fifty amp panel as opposed to two fifty, then that's going to be more costly to replace down the road. So there's a justification for charging that person a little bit extra. And, uh, there are communities that have done senior citizen rates, and, uh, we're going to research that. Now, the other, uh, thing that we're looking at, another program that we're looking at doing is what's called load shifting. And that is at two hundred dollars per megawatt, which, like I said, we're, we had to buy at two sixty-four. At two hundred dollar permit megawatt, that's during peak hours. So that's from nine AM to nine PM. And then off-peak, from nine PM to nine AM, is a hundred dollars per megawatt. So the more we can get people shifted, the lower our cost by fifty percent, uh, will be required. Now, that'd be great if everybody could, but just, uh, but where the real savings are, is if we can get the larger users to do so. Now, you know, retail's retail and people are, are, uh, they're in during the daytime and you really can't change their shopping habits. But for, um, the cannabis industry, they have plants that after a certain age, I mean, they have lights on all the time. And then in order to start their flowering, they had, they're on for twelve hours and then the lights are off for twelve hours. We can get them to have the lights on at night from the nine PM to nine AM, and then have it dark during the day. That can cut our cost, we believe, significantly measurably, uh, by them using hundred dollar per megawatt as opposed to two hundred per megawatt. Now, I probably butchered the, the light situation, but I do know that, uh, first of all, those plants aren't going to care whether they're growing at night or in the daytime. But, uh, we want to start that conversation, uh, with the high users and, um, see what we can do to soften that load. So there are a couple of different ways, um, that we can further, that we'll continue to try and find a way to soften this. Um, it is important to understand, and when you look at this colored chart, that these increases are the market's reaction to things like the Green New Deal, to, um, the, uh, restriction on fossil fuels, coal, nuclear, well, not coal, nuclear, coal, gas, without having an affordable, cheap alternative to jump to. So instead, the only alternative is wind and solar power, which tend to be in the thirty-five cents per kilowatt as opposed to the twelve point seven, which is what we're doing. So, uh, science, technology has not yet established a cheaper alternative than those fuels. And actually, the governor just opened up many closed, uh, natural gas plants to, uh, allow them to turn back on to address this, uh, this power shortage. The other thing we're finding is that the drought has caused a nineteen percent reduction in the amount of electricity that the dams can create. Because as it drops, the head pressure of water going through those dams is cut. And it gets to the point, which we're, we're quite a ways away from, where they can't generate any. But right now, it's documented in an article I shared with you that, um, it, the current hydro production is down nineteen percent because of dams that are, have less water behind them. Um, so that's a long explanation, but it's a, uh, it's a, it's an important issue. And, uh, I, uh, there are some utility board members here. Uh, they studied this in great detail. It was their whole meeting. And, uh, um, if you need to hear from them, they're, I assume they're here because they're available. But, uh, Candace Martinez, Terry Campbell, the chair, Phil Lejeune, um, and also, uh, Dr. Brown, I'll call him a great manager. Um, so you've got four of your seven, uh, board members here. So if you have any, if you want to test what I've told you.
I would like, um, Terry to speak. I spoke to Terry and I have a long thing that I could read you. And you would think I was the most intelligent person in the room, but I did not write this, so.
I'll admit it now. But I did do a lot of homework. I did.
Terry Campbell, forty-four sixty-nine Bourbon Street, and, uh, current chairman of the, of your Board of Public Utilities and unrelated to Counselor Campbell.
Oh, yes, unrelated.
No conflict of interest. Now, what Rick, Rick has kind of give you a thumbnail picture. We're, we're at the mercy of the marketplace due to decisions that are made in Washington DC. Shutting down ga, natural gas pipelines and oil pipelines, shutting down exploration in Alaska, shutting down federal lands from natural gas, because they've got the Green New Deal and they don't want us burning hydrocarbons. And then the governor of California, who's reversed some of his decisions, but the power plants on the coast of California, the natural gas power plants. One of them I used to be an operating supervisor at have been curtailed and when they try to replace that generation that they're losing by shutting down, the air quality management district comes in and says, well, wait a minute. If you want to permit to operate, we'll, we'll let you do it, but instead of making eighteen hundred and fifty megawatts, you can only make thirteen hundred and twenty-five megawatts. So they're reducing the amount of energy and they're not replacing it with this green, so-called green energy that they think, um. So we're, we're at that mercy, but what you have, what I wanted to make sure you guys are, were aware of is the rate policy that was put in effect in two thousand and seven. When the city was subsidizing the utility, to be able to buy contracts month to month, we were at fifteen cents a kilowatt hour. And you'll see from that chart, the major investor-owned utilities in California, which surround us, are paying anywhere from eighteen and a half cents to twenty-four point two cents a kilowatt hour for blended rate. Our blended rate, even though the top tier is going to be twelve seven, will probably be more like around eleven five. And, uh, you're going to get a lot of pressure from your constituents. You just need to be able to, be able to explain to them that we were at eighteen, I mean, eight and a half cents a kilowatt hour because we had a surplus of money in our power purchase account. We had to use all that money to buy these two months worth of power, and we have to replenish those funds. Thank you for your time.
So I have a question for you. Um, in the paperwork, um, this is where I get to sound like I know something, but I just have a question. Um, uh, this goes back to Proposition two eighteen, where it doesn't allow for a greater than ten percent disparity between customer classes. And that's, you know, we own our own utility company. And so that's where we might run into a problem creating a different tier. I don't know if it's true or not. I, I would like to know if that is a problem with doing something. If you lower it for seniors and then you, are you going to up it somewhere else? And where is that, when you do, when you change that, who's subs, who, where's that getting subsidized from? I mean, if we lower it, it has to come from somewhere. And I, listen, I'm, I would do anything for our senior citizens and they deserve it. Uh, you know, or anyone having hardship paying electric bills. But I've just moved, I just gave up my second house because, and only because my electric bill out there was seventeen cents to forty-two cents a kilowatt, depending on rate of usage and time of day. Like our time of day is nine AM to nine PM. I think we need to really push that out there into our community. If you could do your laundry after nine PM, it would be a big help. Might be a lot of water running. No one will be able to take a shower. But it's something to think about. It, it's just something to think about. So I wanted to know if that was, in looking at all this and reading this, is that a, is that something that matters? Or am, am I just reading something into that that's not correct?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, yes, um, Counselor Campbell, the, you're right. What we've done is, uh, Prop, Prop twenty-six, which regulates, uh, electric rates as opposed Prop two eighteen, which is water and sewer. Electric rates for, um, publicly owned utilities. We can only charge what the cost is. Anything above the cost is a tax and has to be voted on by the public. So into that formula is debt. We have to pay the debt. We have to pay the operations and maintenance, the power purchase, the people, the equipment, the poles, materials, supplies. We can have a prudent reserve, which, um, is ten to fifteen percent, which we don't have. And then the last is capital improvements. Then you grind all that together and that comes out to, um, so much money, what the cost is. And then you take that and divide it by the power, and that gives you a cost per kilowatt or cost per megawatt for power consumption to the retail users. And the city has operated, as Terry mentioned, off of a, a rate structure that everybody pays the same. Whether it's my house, your house, the, um, uh, any restaurant, any gas station, the like. Uh, in order to go to a tiered rate. What are you laughing?
I said pot farm.
Oh, um, sorry, Mr. Mayor, it's. Uh, uh, if you do go, if we do choose to go to a tiered rate, then you're right, somebody has, if we're going to give a discount.
Someone's going to eat it.
Somebody has to, because it's the, the, the median across there is going to be twelve point seven. So, uh, but that's, that's a subsequent to this action. Uh, we're going to look at those things in the future.
I'm just preparing to get beat up.
No, 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 on the, on the ten percent, yeah, if we set up a, amongst the different classes of users, like residential, we had, uh, twelve point seven, a commercial, we had fourteen, and other, we, we would have to quantify what the cost was that was requiring that, and you can't have more than ten percent gap between the different tiers. So your language is spot on.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, I have a very simple question. Um, you were saying that we don't have the money to buy power in September?
Right.
So if we do not pass this, what can we expect? Brownouts?
We want to have power.
We would just turn off.
We will have, um, forty-one percent of the power that we need, and that's the hydro power.
So we would end up with rolling blackouts at best? Or rolling brownouts at best?
You're right.
If we do not pass this to get the money to purchase more electricity in this time?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and it's, it's this dramatic shift that's happened in a very short period of time.
I have one more question. It's very quick. Um, at the end of this summer, i- is there a time and place where our electricity cost will be less again? Like right now, we're doing, it's not going to go down?
It won't be.
They're saying no.
It won't be less, usage will be less.
Usage will be less, but, but what we're paying for it will not go back down?
Eventually it could. It could, may, may not, but this is, this is the chart. This is the trend.
Okay.
Um, it's always.
Terry said it was at fifteen at one time.
Yeah, and, and when you look at your, your charts in here, in two thousand and seven, instead of paying two sixty-four, which we think is outrageous, the MP UA was paying eight hundred dollars per megawatt.
Who was in office? In the White House. Who was that? Was it? Obama, yeah. Democrat.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
I am out of worry by which I need to speak, so because.
Anyone else from, anything else from the council, not opening us to public debate?
Barbara Beer, two thirteen Safari, um, are we considered an opportunity zone, low income? Or is, is that, is opportunity zone what they call that? Because our income is so low here, and therefore there are no extra benefits. We're not taking advantage of, because I know you would know that if there were, because we're an opportunity zone. We can't apply for grants or anything to help us. We can't apply for grants or anything to help us.
Well, Mr. Mayor. We are designated an opportunity zone, which is basically from the railroad tracks uphill. So on the riverside of the railroad tracks, no. So what it does, it allows if you have a capital gains from a property sale and instead of paying the normal tax rate on those capital gains, if you reinvest it in the opportunity zone area, that allows you and you leave it there for ten years, you pay no.
I mean benefit, don't we have any benefits relative to this issue?
But we will, we're going to be, we're going to, no, but we're on the hunt for them.
My second question is, thank you very much. My second question is, did I make you want to put a mask on? I miss your smile. Anyway. Do we have anything at all in the city I know Rainey or somebody else in the city was working on it last year or the year before? It has to do with solar power. We we studied that. I thought, was it Rainey that was in charge of the study that she was looking into? And that's if that if that question, everything that you can think of that we can do with solar power is what my question is about. Even on a little scale, if we can help get something to run our refrigerators or other smaller power.
Mr. Mayor, the utility board, we have a requirement that we go that we have fifty percent alternative energy by the year twenty thirty. So the utility board has created a subcommittee that met for the first time today about how to get to that alternative scenario. The problem that we still have is that the wholesale cost solar is two X what this new rate is going to be. Now, technology will address that over time. But right now, the utility board is hard at work on that very issue. I'm sorry, Terry, you want to add?
Terry Campbell, forty-four six nine. We've had three other committees that ad hoc committees that looked into solar. And the problem was the cost. And the the contract, the one the one contract that they wanted us to go into had a twenty-five million dollar backdoor payment that the rate payers would have to pay that just made it untenable. But we've we've talked with the city about the city side, because you know, we're kind of joined at the hip, the utility and the city, to start putting panels on these rooftops that this on the city buildings. And you know, we had the money to do that, except we just spent it to buy energy for these two months. But we did have some cash reserves, cash reserves around twelve percent, which is kind of normal for a business operation. And we we reformed this ad hoc committee and I would suggest that maybe one or two council members participate in that committee because it's always beneficial to have that information on the NPA board as well as the utility board that's looking into this. See, the utility board's function is is a rate-making policy. So we could use your assistance, but the problem, some of the things that you need to consider is private public partnerships. You know, we just, we got a waiver on rooftop mandate mandate from the California Energy Commission. Because our energy prices were so cheap, it doesn't justify the rate of return on investment. You know, it'd be twenty-two, twenty-five years to get your money back. And most businesses are looking at a one and a half to two-year return on investment, capital improvement. So those are the kind of things that need to be considered. But some of the other things is partnership, you know, the P that I've mentioned is to Rick. And I've asked this committee to to kind of expand it past just solar, make it more of an ad hoc energy committee. But we got PG&E that wants to upgrade that transmission line down there so they can get off of their generator down there and use our cheap power. Well, why aren't we going into a partnership with them and saying, hey, you run those generators at peak demand? As a what you what used to be, when I worked at the department in the eighties, it was called the PURPA program. It was where like a cheese factory was going to have their own generators. The one in Corona joined forces with the city of Corona and supplied power to the city of Corona because they overbuilt their generation. Our station up here for Silco Gas has two generators up there that they use. So you know, there there may be some joint benefit to both the utility and to those private corporations. But we won't know until we explore it with and look at the cost. So.
Thank you.
Right. Mr. Mayor, so based on the information presented, our recommendation is to approve the budget adjustment and then the utility board set rate will come into effect to fund that.
There are a few questions by the council. For the discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Five eyes, Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seventeen, ordinance number six forty-one dash AC and interim urgency ordinance imposed for thirty-five day seaward moratorium on industrial hemp cultivation effective upon adoption of the ordinance is approved greeting. Staff report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Now, I'm not a an expert in this as much as some of you members are in the. No, that's not what I meant. It is, you paid more attention during biology class than I did. So we allow cannabis under a very strict regulatory protocol. Hemp is a different plant altogether. It's botanical, has a different name. So hemp is basically a very, very minuscule level of THC that goes, the plant goes back to colonial times and beyond for fabric, rope. It's got uses that are involving consumption. Hemp, if it pollinates into a cannabis facility, will destroy the crops.
No, it'll make them hemp.
Yeah, it'll it'll convert them to hemp.
All of them.
Right, so basically it's a male plant where the cannabis that is grown here, these are female plants which have the buds on them. If hemp, which is a, it will override genetically and convert those cannabis plants to hemp. So it is important that we not have hemp in the community if we want to have a cannabis industry. Now, across the river, there's a hemp farm. And driving back from having dinner, I was stunned one evening when I could smell cannabis. And I thought, oh, my God, this can't be coming from needles. And it turns out the next day it was clarified that, no, this is a hemp farm that somebody's growing up on on ninety-five. And that startled me. And so what we need to do is get to a ban. We can't do that outright. We need to, so this protocol has been advised by the city attorney's office on how to two-step into it. And the, when the feds approved the agricultural bill last year in Congress, they assigned, they allowed hemp farms to be created. And in California, the regulation of farms is to the county agricultural commission, which we don't believe has permitting authority inside the city. But we want to do this stopgap to make sure that there is a moratorium that gets declared on no answer here. And then we'll do what's necessary to consider putting in front of you a ban because it will decimate totally industry. So we're asking for your approval of the first reading and of a moratorium. Tim was, oh, right, right, yeah, that's right, excuse me. Yeah, it would go into effect tomorrow.
Forty-five days.
Councilmember Trump.
The hemp that you're talking about, is that been regulated by California to grow indoor or outdoor?
Hemp's all outdoor.
It's all outdoor.
It's all outdoor, so there's just free flowing. So that's what we smelled off of King Street, Nightway ninety-five.
That's right.
Okay.
Hemp is cannabis. It's a Rudy Alice. The ones that are grown across the river are auto flower. So you put them in the ground, they grow about two and a half feet tall and they flower and start flowering in thirty days, no matter what. My problem with that there is now Falfa fields owned by the tribe south of them. What's way to wind blow from the north, you know? So we'll we'll see how that works. Yes, it it can go in. Hemp is cannabis. It's defined as hemp being less than three percent THC content. There's massive benefits to this. But without researching how to do it correctly, your cultivation of cannabis would be gone in a year. There's no way to stop pollen from going in air conditioning units. I I don't care. I mean, you can filter the smell from going out of the buildings, but you have to suck air into those buildings. You have to keep those rooms cold and humidified constantly. And another thing with the power, if we didn't buy power, you wouldn't have any money in a year because those generators aren't going to run those twenty thousand square foot facilities day in and day out. I'm all for hemp. Hemp plastic, hemp oil, hemp fiber, amazing. The guy across the river, in my opinion, doesn't really know what he's doing yet. They should be eight feet tall. You should be producing, making the most out of your fields. I'm not against doing a ban real quick, but I'd like to research this and this is a whole different industry. There's a a factory in Iowa, Illinois. They import eight hundred tons, eight hundred thousand tons of hemp fibers. They are, it's those little fiber patches that are inside your seats of your automobiles. You know, that little brown that hooks to the wire, it's all hemp. And you know, a factory like that would be amazing here. But right now, you you, Rick's right, you're jeopardizing millions of tax dollars. In my opinion, this, I I would like to see research in this because this could be beneficial for our community in the future. But it is a safety issue if you're looking at millions of dollars that you want to build roads next year with. Because it could end up like that.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? I have a motion, but wait a minute, any public comment?
Hi, this is Cora. Hi, this is Cora from one five zero Vine Street.
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to make a public comment about hemp. I agree with the gentleman who's talked about the study and maybe even a limitation as to the amount or percentage wise or the volume of hemp that could be grown at a certain time in the future. But the benefits could be outstanding, not only for the city and beyond as far as income to the city. So I'd like to see more research done on it and not completely ban it, but maybe do the research and find an avenue where both can coexist in the same space without, you know, impeding on the others' sales potential. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If you want to close a public.
I'll make a motion, Your Honor.
I'll second that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number six four one dash AC approving an interim urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Needles imposing a citywide moratorium on industrial hemp cultivation and direct the city to do some research on that item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Five eyes, Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't need to have a discussion regarding eighty-three, which is a desert conservation program within the California Wildlife Conservation Board staff report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Assembly Bill eleven eighty-three provides an appropriation to the wildlife agencies and to private conservation programs to purchase environmentally sensitive lands in the desert. This was put on and I have a draft resolution of support. And I also have a from Assembly Member Ramos, who's the sponsor of the bill, a background and bill summary, the bill itself. And this arrived at the request of Councilmember Campbell. So we haven't had a lot of time to delve into this, but it would provide funding for conservation of environmentally sensitive lands. Environmentally sensitive lands are in the eye of the beholder. But it's a, this is the bill and I don't want to get into it too much because I Counselor Campbell is much more informed on this than I. I just wanted to get it on the agenda for you.
All right, coming in from Councilmember Campbell.
Yes, Your Honor, I was contacted by Gary Hunt's office. He is the director of the Desert Conservation Land Trust. I I don't think my microphone's working. It doesn't work. I just, I don't know how close I can get. Is that better? Okay, so I was contacted by Gary Hunt, it's a Gary Hunt, and he is the director of the Desert Conservation Land Trust. And there are two deserts left in California that are not part of this, and ours is one of them. And the 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 words like the acquisition of land is always a very scary thing here. And what what do they want? And this is a bill. They're not looking after any, they're not looking for any land that is not is not productive or gainful for the purse the party's giving it up. It's for protection. It's for areas that, like maybe we want to hike or we climb on mountains or we stop things like maybe not so much in our area, but in the cities where they or mountains closer to the cities where people might want to develop, where there's animals, we have bighorn sheep here, we have the desert tortoise, we have other things that we want to to.
Lagoon.
Well, that's coming up, where we want to preserve things. And one of the things that we're working on is we do have the ad hoc committee together to put it, to restore the lagoon, which probably wasn't natural to begin with, but it was, it was, it's been there for a long time. And we want to put a park in front of that and creating that, that conservation right there of the desert property, the riverfront property, giving us a place that will be able to go to the beach, a place that will never be able to be developed. And with the passing of this bill, it. And with the passing of this bill, uh it, and the reason for the rush is that it is uh, they have to vote on it on the next level at the end of this week. They just want our, they want our um support, that we, endorsement, that's the word. Some of the things that this will also do for us is that our lagoon falls under, the, the lagoon in the park absolutely falls underneath the auspice of this. So does our visitor center. So does a boat launch. So there's many, there's like millions and millions and millions of dollars available in grant money. And I do know that Coachella, since two thousand and two, and to date, has received sixty-eight million dollars in grant money for things in the conservation i- in their desert, in their area. And this is all, and a lot of it boosting tourism. So that's what we're all about, is tourism and getting people to come here, creating parks and with indigenous plants and plaques. And maybe we need another boat ramp. Maybe, maybe Jack Smith Park isn't enough, you know, I don't know. I don't know where we, we're going forward, when we get bigger and what we need. But that money is earmarked for many, many different things. And so, you know, Gary had, you know, given his phone number for anyone that wanted to talk to him. They're asking us just for an endorsement on it. And um we have a, we have a lot to benefit as, as our city, especially with what we're doing right now to have access to, you know, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars. I mean, not all of it, but that would be nice.
But some of it.
So that's kind of, you know, that is kind of it. If you, and this included in this was the draft resolution, but there's a, there's a fact sheet, which is the third page, and it's the background, the problem, and the bill summary, which is kind of the Reader's Digest version. That's kind of like, you know, we have the Joshua Tree out here. We have a lot of places that are, you know, people like to go. This is not going to eliminate off-roading. It's going to eliminate more um development of you know, building on desert properties where people like to go and where animals live. And it's not, you know, not, not letting it because we want rooftops, but that's in our city, not so much where places we want to hike. So, I don't know. That's the best I can explain it to.
All right. Further discussion by the council? Yes, Tina?
Okay, I had a lot of concerns about this and uh because conservation is in the eye of the beholder. So I reached out to
Gary.
Gary, that's it, that's it. And had quite a, quite an extensive conversation with him about it because there was a bill similar to this that was in the federal government, I believe, last year or the year before, where they were using it as a weapon at some points to uh stop people from doing things in certain areas such as mining or exploring for oil or things like that. But after speaking with him, my concerns were actually uh um resolved. So I feel that this is not a bad choice after reading on it more.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any public comment, please?
Well, Barbara Go Two Thirteen Safari, I would have several concerns. And at this point, I'm glad I didn't read the bill, so I'm a bit uninformed. However, I do know that Ramos is a Democrat to start with. And that tells me a lot right there. I also know a lot of other things that he has done in Sacramento, which I won't go into right here that are not favorable to the citizens as far as I'm concerned, but that's my personal opinion. Um, my concern is that out in, I don't know how much land this covers, but out in Katie's, I think it is, um, the turnoff, they shut off, turned down, we can't get through there anymore out in the middle. That whole part of Mojave Desert extending into Arizona is all an underground aqueduct of water that the government has tried to get their hands on for decades. I don't know what kind of progress they've made. They've gone in under the auspice of individual companies. Um, they're seeking bottled, to make bottled water for people. And all they want is the underground water aqueduct. And this kind of interference in our desert, in the Mojave Desert, that would be my concern. It's no longer going to be feasible or allowed for us to travel in certain areas as long as the government has access to that land to do whatever they please. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing now we turn to the council for a discussion.
Yes.
Uh, when I spoke to Mr. Hunt, uh, I specifically asked if this was a way to come in and take land from us. And he said absolutely not. It's a way to, if we would acquire or buy land, we'd take, have land that was willing to take, forgive up or protect. It wasn't a way for them to come in. They're not coming in to ask to take our desert away.
I know, so. Listen, I, I feel kind of hesitant also on this just because, again, I mean, coming in and making more rules for the desert. I mean, I believe in conservation, but are, what, what is the end game here? There's more to this than just.
Can you speak in the mic?
Sorry, it's just not really loud. It's more, there's more, more to it than just conserving our desert. I mean, some, something. So there, I, I don't, I, I just don't feel comfortable with this one. Unless there's some, conserving their plants is all they're saying, we would be eligible to help conserve our plants? I mean, we can apply for our grants no matter what. That's not, I mean, if the grant comes available, we can apply for it, whether we are an active member of this or vote yes on it. I'm, I don't know, maybe I'm just confused on this whole.
Sean, you want this? I'll, I'll come back here.
Yeah.
Thank you, Oliver, Mayor, Council, um, Sean Gibson, fourteen oh six Bailey. Um, there is other avenues out there right now available if somebody wants to donate or give their land for conservation. You look at the east of Mojave, which I grew up in, you know, lived there and kind of did everything there. It's, it's all been closed down because of first acts like this. The Desert Conservation Act came in and went from that with the BLM, that came in the Park Service, now it's preserved. They shut off all the water. You can't hardly find any wildlife out there. And there's also a, a group already established it. If you want to give your land a donation, it's called Mojave Land Trust, Mojave Desert Land Trust. They've been here in front of us. You donate the land, they actually pay your land, or what they do is take it and they give it to the Park Service. So I think this is outside of the realm of the city of Needles. This is something that we need to talk to our, because our uppers about our congressmen and senators and stuff, because, you know, you mentioned anything in the ransom fund or something, one name that just makes them cringe is Diane Feinstein. And that's how it happened with the Desert Conservation Act in like eighty-seven or eighty-four, whatever it was. So just be weary. Sounds too good to be true.
Yeah.
Not true.
Thank you. All right, um, now back to the council, yes, please.
I, I just want to piggyback exactly what you guys said. I feel the same way. I'm, I'm very hesitant because letting, you know, the big government come in to things like this. I, I'm leery too. I, I guess I don't have a whole lot more to say than what they said, but I feel the exact same way as Taun, I guess.
All right. Any other discussion?
I, I would like to just make a comment. My name is Cora. At least I'm at one five zero zero Vine Street. I can appreciate um the grants. Um, and I'm not sure if the City of Needles has ever considered um employing a grant writer who can do the research on all these different initiatives and make sure that it aligns with the vision and mission of Needles. So that way, moving forward, you could be fully educated and aware of what those grants stand for. And you can make an informed decision. And that's just something I wanted to throw out there. There's a lot of money, a ton of money for um low-income areas like Needles.
Could you want to join, Sean?
Oh, um, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we do have a grant writer uh that I, that Bird Dogs grant opportunities. And we've been able to capture millions of dollars of grants uh for the city as a result of that effort.
Thank you.
Right, Your Honor.
Yes.
And, and this is a time-sensitive piece. That's why we kind of put on it. We don't really know much about it, right? So we, we don't have time to research it. You know, I, I, I hike the desert. Northern Arizona, Southern California, Southern Nevada. I've hiked it all. And uh, uh, I've seen people trash the desert. And I've also seen the government shut down all of Northern Arizona two weeks ago, killing hiking permits, pushing campers out. Um, I'm all for conservation, but the control issue is what bugs me. Um, you know me, I'm out there picking up trash, trying to clean our river. Uh. If they came and told me I couldn't go to my river anymore, I would be pretty pissed off. Um. I, I don't know. I, I would like more research, e- even if it's quick research.
I would not have a meeting in two weeks. I'm even having emergency meetings.
No, oh, I know.
I um, like to see either a motion at table or a motion for action.
I'll make the motion to table.
Table? Okay. I have a second.
Uh, parliamentary inquiry, Mr. Mayor, uh, to a certain date or to the next meeting?
You would continue.
Continue it.
Right, right.
The next meeting.
Right.
And, and I don't know that anything will change.
I'll leave you up before the legislature by then.
I guess that's not even necessary.
Uh, Dale's correct. Uh, rather table to continue the map uh until the next meeting. And we will do that research.
You have a motion? Do you have a motion to continue?
Motion to, I will make a motion to continue.
Is there a second?
I'll second or continue.
Right. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. What is to continue this one out to the next meeting? Call for vote.
Three eyes, two nose. Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
Merritt.
No.
Belt.
No.
Longacre.
Yes.
So a motion to continue, I would assume a majority would rule.
Yeah, it's not a.
I believe so. Lena can chime in, but.
Spend money or.
Okay, city attorney's report.
I have nothing to report.
Yes, I do. I've circulated it. Let me hit the summaries. The, there's a private company looking to establish a homeless service center uh in the city. Um, initially, they were talking about putting this service center in the El Garsas. Uh, and now they're folk, tend to be focusing on uh the former jewelry store next to the museum. Poncho? Was it Poncho? Okay. Jewelry store, whatever. Uh, anyway, um, uh, it would, um, and then they would hope to be able to get funding from the county uh to operate it. Uh, their stated intent is to do, have showers, um, meals, food, distribution, um, laundry, access to um internet. And so it's day, it is not housing uh overnight, at least what's been proposed so far. So what we've done in response have told them, you need a special use per- conditional use permit. So we've told the people that are proposing it to do so, it'll go to the planning commission, then come to city council. Um, we are looking at uh perhaps relocating the swim area down at Jack Smith Park because of concern uh that the boating uh levels are, the launch levels are such that we don't want boaters to get over near that swim area, especially in light of the person who was, uh, had a leg severed at, at the last week. So we, we can look about moving it closer to Verde Shore or I want to investigate uh perhaps opening up Bureau Bay as uh a swim area only.
I'd probably clear that first beach and, and put in the Yeah. the rope.
So we, we need to, uh, the swim area I'm developing a concern about. Even though we just got the weeds pulled. Uh, but also on parking citations, uh, we've changed our protocols if, for those that get there before the booth opens. Uh, if they buy a pass, um, I want to uh, then, and they have a citation for not being there, then I want to tear up any citations uh as long as they've purchased a pass on their way out.
I have a quick question on that. Um, say you're a year pass holder and you live in Orange County and drive all the way out here and you forget your pass. You're most likely not going to drive home to get it. You're going to park your truck, launch your boat, but then they get a ticket. Well, we have a, do we wipe that ticket clear when they show proof of their yearly pass?
Yes. And what we do is we have a log of all the annual passes.
Okay.
So we have in the toll booth or in the, the booth, um, that log. So uh if you, people lose them, uh, and then we will reissue. And um, um, anyway, yes, that, that's what we do.
Thank you.
Um, the, I've had inquiries about the visitor center, um, about what deadline is there. I know there's a December thirty-one, it has to be open, uh, but I'm going to research that a little bit more. Uh, but um, I think one of your counselors is going to, is going to notify you that she's going to call a committee meeting of that group um shortly. I don't want to preempt that. I, I mentioned the road program debrief. Um, we're preparing specs for the next phase. Uh, the city received a grant. I don't think it's physically received until tomorrow, but of five hundred and eighty-five thousand for COVID relief uh funding. And then we will receive the same amount uh in June of twenty twenty-one. And that was legislation that was passed by Congress uh before the first of the year. Uh, and we're, we're checking about what uses that money can be put to. Uh, also, um, Patrick in the development department is working on a report to compare the cost of development on the side of the river versus the other side in terms of utilities, property taxes, uh permit costs and the like. Um, I mentioned the utility board's um energy, alternative energy committee. Um, we're also, the Best Motel, uh, as you know, has been, has been closed. Um, but interesting enough, we have three parties who have contacted us that we've put in contact with the property owner about redeveloping that property, whether it be rehabbing it or knocking it down, starting. Um, and then uh the planning commission um is working through a subcommittee of the planning commission on uh dealing with short-term rentals. And I'll keep you informed as that evolves. So we're glad to answer questions, but you know where to hang out.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell.
Oh, excuse me, sorry. Well, a question, the homeless day use would be a special use permit. So it would go to the planning commission, just. Sorry.
Councilmember Campbell.
Um, Your Honor, um, the first thing I'd like to um say is that um, we reported before that the ad hoc committee got together with the tribe to start uh the dialogue and start working towards the lagoon and the park. But what actually in fact happened at that first meeting was discussions on the other property on the other side, which is the bridge, which is what we've been talking about for a while, with the fence going all the way up to the bridge, no access. And it's been a source of contention for the city. It's been a source of contention for the tribe. We have come together, the tribe and the city have come together, many conversations, many meetings. Um, and the end, just to cut the story short, this week, he sold that property to the tribe. So that property now belongs to the tribe, all the way to the bridge. So that property now belongs to the tribe, all the way to the bridge. Except for our piece. So that we can talk about that later.
You can talk about that.
You do that. So, but that was, I, I honestly, I was really excited to hear that, that, um, that they did that. But, you know, it was really, it was really funny because when we were talking um about, you know, when it came up, she, one of the council members said, well, why don't we just buy it? And Rick looked at her and said, is that on the table? And, you know, it just went from there. And then, then Selena and Colleen, you know, they went that way. We came this way and then I wasn't part of any of the negotiations after that. But it was really um exciting to hear that that was the end result and that that was able to happen. And so the next, you know, now we move forward. Um, and that brings me to the vision. Um, I, I guess I'll come and talk to Rick and Randy, uh, find out how we move forward, finding who does the artwork for the vision um for the lagoon and the park. Someone has to do that. Who pays for it? Do I have to have a GoFundMe or does the city help me? So as an ad hoc person. Um, so that was that. Um, okay, um, I received um an email from a person in town. Um, and it told me a lot of things that I already knew that uh we have the COVID um resurging, um, the Delta variant in Needles. There is a family here that is extremely ill uh in several different households. And one of them went to the hospital in a hundred and twenty-five degree weather and was told to wait in the car. Um, you know, she couldn't even go into the hospital. And he, this um person feels that that's just not a good look for our healthcare system in our town. And that, you know, the co, if that, that a hospital, he says, if the, I won't read you the whole thing. But if anyone thinks that a hospital diagnosis of COVID is an automatic helicopter trip one hundred miles away, we're thinking, well, thinking most will do as we tough it out as best we can. I mean, people don't, we don't want to go each shift away. It's really, I mean, this, unless you really need to be there. I don't know what the answers are for that, but um I don't know. I, I, this person is not suggesting we go back to masks um or do things, but that the city needs to be aware that it's coming back. It's here again. We don't know what it is. And, you know, we just need to be careful. We need to be prepared.
Like prepared.
Yeah, I'm prepared. We need to be prepared. And, um, and with the COVID money that you just talked about, the five hundred eighty-five thousand, I don't know how we help people. I mean, they, you already spoke about the, um, the utilities that, you know, there's agencies that are going to help with people who aren't able to pay their bills while they weren't working and stuff, but this is, I mean, we have people here that are home alone, that don't, that really don't have family here. They have nothing. I can tell you personally that I spent my week last week getting all the supplies that you need for COVID with zinc and vitamin D, vitamin C, uh, Alka Plus Cold Medicine, Pedialyte, Gatorade. And I made boxes and tea. And I made boxes for these families and I took them and dropped them off on their porch because they didn't have anyone at that moment to go get things. And these people were so sick. I mean, one of the households certainly is dying.
They've been vaccinated.
It's not, I don't know. Um, I'm the other um person, the other person, it's not COVID, but the other person. So, you know, I don't know. Um, what I'm asking for, do we have a, a testing, do we have a way to set up testing again? Um, do we have a place, is there a place for people to go get vaccinated still in our town? Or you can go to ride? I don't know those answers, but this person asked me these questions, so I'm asking questions. What do we do for our citizens? Barbara?
Well, I had somebody I know that got sick. I don't know you anymore than that. But I went to, she found out Walmart, so we just go to Walmart, they're waiting. They're right near the pharmacy when you go in Fort Mojave or home, there are both stores have them. They're in a box and there are two tests in that box, test once. Regardless of what you are, it could be a most positive or negative or whatever. Then thirty-six hours, you test again. And then that's too positive, then you have to stop and consider what you might. So, but that testing is open to the public to purchase if you can't get access any other way. I called local drug stores for that person and one was right eight hopefully. And I can't remember who else I called further up. And they said, no, um, you gotta
Okay.
Pick it up, buy it before they come, or you have to make an appointment to go in and get tested at the local drug store and some other place they call. So this person wanted the test because that person knew what to do with it. And these records are very clear.
Okay.
So you can get it for twenty minutes.
As long as you don't go get it yourself. You send someone to get it. No, I don't mean here personally. I mean, so do you want to send someone to get it if you think you're that COVID? You don't want to go to, you don't want to go to the store and buy a COVID test if you have COVID. So, um, anyway, they, um.
Tim Terrell, he'll go get it for you.
So, um, so the, the concern was is, you know, being careful, you know, that we're, we have, um, we've gone through that, we're um crowds of people on our beaches, um, restaurants and et cetera. And, um, and making sure that, you know, people are warned to be, you know, be careful. We have to all be vigilant ourselves with being careful. I, I've had it and I'm vaccinated, but that I don't know that that's, you know, God's tap on my head that I'm going to be fine, but I'm hoping for it. So, um, I want to, and then there's one last thing I wanted to ask. Uh, I know this was brought up before, but I'm sorry, I don't remember if we just discussed it or it's off the table or it'll never happen. Cause Zach, I think you may have brought it up, Zach. Uh, I know we talked about it. Is what is the feasibility practicality for putting a kiosk like they have at San Clemente for parking at Jack Smith Park? I was just at San Clemente for a week and a half, um, going to the same beach I've been going to for thirty-seven years. And they have for many, many years have a kiosk where I have to pull in, look at the number on the parking space. And I have to go to that machine, put my card in and pay for that parking. And then if the parking is expired, it, it's automatic.
By the hour.
Yeah, it's by the hour. And you can, you can re-up it from your boat or from the store or from the movie theater. If you run it, you know, I've got till three o'clock. You, if you have a reminder, you can put on your phone and it will remind you to add more money to that kiosk. So it's just something to, to think about. Uh, we have uh people coming in early. It's still, I mean, it wouldn't happen this year, but as far as summertime use and people going in early in the morning, they could pay the minute they got there and then they wouldn't have to worry about going back and forth. I don't know what that would do to personnel. You cut down the stress on personnel um at, down there or having to have someone there. I mean, there's no one at San Clemente State Beach. So take bank on that saying. So I just, you know, just wondered if that was a, just, just something to think about.
Thank you.
That's all I can say.
I don't have anything this evening.
Thank you.
You don't have anything this evening?
Yeah, a few things.
Um, first off, the meeting for, we can get um visitor center meeting, updates on when our open's going to be. Second, Caltrans meetings, we can get set up, trying to, we still need our off ramps cleaned up. Not one thing's been done. Um, homeless centers, can we talk to them about a different area, not in our downtown directly? Second thing, energy, um, cost going up. People remember, we choose our elected officials. Um, twenty twenty, we get to change house. Let's um make, get registered to vote. Please uh choose your elect, your elected officials wisely. Um, third thing, um, if you are a downtown area, since we're, when we're talking to opening up this Hawaii Garza, can we look at, most nice downtowns have some nice flowers, even if we do fakes. I know we're um hot, but um maybe looking into cost of areas, things that are attached to pools. There's flowers on them, welcoming, making it a little more positive in that, especially El Garza area. So that hopefully we can continue on this road of having a downtown area and making it um pay um human friendly. Um, a building across from the credit union where we are on our steps to what phase they're in and make sure they're compliant with their goals. Um, and where we are in First Beach project, making, making sure we get that grassy knoll area up and running. And if, get vaccinated, get your COVID vaccine, vac, COVID is coming back. And it is, people coming in with it are not getting their vaccine. So make, get your vaccine. It's helps prevent it. Um, that's all I got to say on that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, Your Honor, I have a few things. Um, first of all, there's a set of white lines in front of the dumpster at Manny Morris Park. They, they go like that. They're right directly in front of the dumpster, a white stripe. Paint them red. No more parking there. Every weekend, there's two cars parked there. We have to ticket them or call the cops. It's, let's just paint it red. They don't park in front of red. Uh, train park, we have dead shrubs, dead trees, graffiti on the train. The BNSF still won't trade, trim their palm trees, but I, I'd like to clean that park up a little bit. Uh, cannabis enforcement, they need a larger vehicle. I don't know. You just saw our new code enforcement. I saw him and Bernie in that little teeny truck the other day and, and I'm sorry, but let's get him something, a little more room. I was, I thought of a clown car, you know, I just, I was like, is anyone else can get out of that little teeny thing?
Adrian did in it too?
There's no way during to get in that car with those two men. There's no way. It's tiny little truck. Um, uh, re- recently I reached out to local businesses to uh, to clean up the graffiti at our skate park. I, I, I took a little hit from it, but it, it actually worked in my favor. A, a lot of locals were interested in donating it. A few cannabis companies have reached out to me. So while there's so much interest in, before I take a cent from any donor, I would like the city to give me the square footage, give me a computer printout of the whole skate park. Um, I need to know if, because if we paint it, we have to paint it with acrylic. It, it's not going to be an easy task. It's going to cost some money. Spray cans cost a lot. Um, would it be easier to buff the graffiti off and put an inner seal on it, which is a weatherization coat? It's clear. It, it keeps acid rain off concrete. I, I, I want to look at, at the cost and effectiveness of putting paint on it and fixing it for five years or, or shaving off that graffiti and inner sealing it and saving it for twenty-five years. So before I do anything, I'm working with the chamber with this. They're very interested in helping us. So, um, I want to make this happen. Um, so as soon as we could get going on that, we have a lot of interest in helping this project. And uh, last but not least, I'd like to send my condolences to the Walter family, Pierce family, Knickerbocker family. They lost a local to murder a couple nights ago in Bohe. It's a hard to bury a parent and it's harder to bury a child. Hug your loved ones. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.